Five thirty. Are you ready, Commissioner Kuzinow?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Community and Economic Development Committee to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lloyd, Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker. Commissioner Kuzinow.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhel.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
To move.
Court.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any public comment to the committee? Public comment going twice? Public comment three times? No public comment. Do we have communications?
No communications, Commissioner.
Do we have any old business?
No.
New business? Resolution 2024-989, Approval of an Agreement Between Genesee County and the Michigan Department of Transportation, in the Amount of $50,000 to Provide for the Ride Share Program for Fiscal-
To move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there question and discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1006, Approval of a Purchase Order to Genesee County Land Bank for the Fiscal Year Ending 2025, in an Amount Not to Exceed $800,000 to Provide for Property Acquisition Costs for 2025.
To move.
Report.
It's been moved and supported. Is there question and discussion? Yes, Commissioner Ellenberg.
Yes, could we have the Treasurer come up and explain that for those that are watching?
Sure.
This is actually planning resolution.
Okay.
Just during our deputy director will be here.
Good evening, Chris.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
So, this is actually an annual purchase order that we bring. So, we have an agreement with the land bank to acquire properties for us under a mortgage foreclosure program that we've run for a long time. So, basically, this purchase order is put in place so that we can pay them back for their, for the costs of purchasing the home and any kind of insurance costs and things like that.
Is there more than one, or is just this, I mean, it's a group for 800,000?
It could be a few properties, yes.
Okay.
It just depends. Yep.
Are there other questions? Yes, Commissioner Kuzinow.
And then, correct me if I'm wrong, but then you sell the house and it goes back into the system as a revolving type thing to keep doing more and more. Correct.
Other questions? Okay, thanks, Chris. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1009, Approval of a Proposed Amendment to the 2023-2024 Appropriations Resolution Allowing for the Flushing Township CDBG Transfer of $10,000 from Accounts.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any question and discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to mention that I had a conversation with Supervisor Thorsby, who is the supervisor of Flushing Township. He alerted me to the fact that this was coming, and they are very supportive of the change.
Okay, great. Thank you. Other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1014, Approval of a Request by Genesee County's Planning Commission to Reallocate $7,353 of Emergency Solutions Grant Funding to G Card, $3,676.50, and Catholic Charities, $3,676.50 for Homeless Prevention Activities.
Report.
It's been moved and supported. Questions and discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1036, Approval of a Purchase Order to Various Approved Contractors for the Fiscal Year Ending 2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $1,446,342.97 to Provide for Genesee County's Home Improvement and Urgent Repair Program. The Cost of this Purchase will be Paid for from the Accounts Listed.
To move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. What questions do you have? Okay, seeing no questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Do we have any other business before the committee? All right. Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned at 5:35.
Finance Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd. Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
President.
Commissioner Kuzinow.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhel.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
All right, I need a motion to approve the minutes from August 14th. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We now take a few moments to, for public comment to the committee. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to make a comment to the committee? Going once, twice, three times? Public comment is now closed. Communications?
Mr. Chair, this is an emergency purchase request that was not $56 million. It was $56,000.
Thank you.
From the Sheriff's Office to deal with kitchen supplies around their dishwasher. So, what we're trying to do is if there's an instance where there needs to be emergency purchase, we're putting them on the agenda so the public can see that they were made, and also the board can see that they were made, and it does include the backup material for all that information. So, just trying to be more transparent to everybody.
Okay, do I have a motion for-
There's no motion needed. That's just a communication.
Do we vote on it?
Nope.
You're really trying to confuse me.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Just communication.
It's easy. Is there any old business? None. New business? Resolution 24-819, Approval of Agreement Between Genesee County and Fetch E.H. in an Amount Not to Exceed $31,500 to Provide for the Purchase of Environmental Health Software. The Cost of this Agreement will be Paid from the Following Account.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Haggles in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-828, Approval of a Purchase Order to S.H.I. Incorporated in the Amount Not to Exceed $52,100 to Provide for Multi-Factor Authentication Software. The Cost of this Purchase Order will be Paid from the Accounts.
Move it.
Support.
Is there any discussion?
Commissioner?
Yes.
Just a quick question. Where will this, will the software be used countywide then? Is that the-
I think it's through the parks, but do we have an explanation?
Yeah, our IT Director is here. He can explain it to you.
The internal, yeah, it's for our staff. We're rolling out, you know, last year we did that internal just for certain functions. Now, it's going, it's expanding. It's everywhere within the county.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-870, Approval of a Request by Genesee County's Treasurer to Approve Grand Blank Marketplace LLC to Utilize Pace Financing for the Redevelopment of the Former Grand Blank Kmart Property.
Report.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Mr. Shoemaker?
I would like an explanation on it to understand what's transpiring here, if I may.
Okay, who do we have here to do that?
Treasurer.
I'm here.
Oh, that's right. I saw her earlier. I'm sorry, Deb.
Commissioner Shoemaker, I couldn't hear what you were asking.
I was just wanting an explanation of what the project is, why we're involved, and-
Oh, okay. Well, first of all, just so you know that years ago, when I, probably within the first few years of me becoming Treasurer, we became a PACE partner with, it's a program that's run statewide, and it was to help get, to do economic development projects that would include energy refinancing, making buildings more energy efficient, that kind of thing. It's grown to something even more than that now, and while we really don't have a role other than approving the project and being a partner, we're not financing it in any way. The Lean and Green Michigan, where the PACE program operates with local governments, and I believe that somebody's here from Lean and Green, Michigan, to explain what this project is particularly for. There you are. This is Mr. Wiley.
Hi, thanks for having me. John Wiley with Lean and Green, Michigan. I'm Senior Counsel. Yeah, so the PACE program is set up statewide. It allows municipalities to opt in. It allows property owners to take advantage of private financing, utilizing a special assessment on the property. So, this property is an old Kmart. A new property owner came in, bought it, is redeveloping it. The Kmart into three large buildings, then putting two new, like outbuildings. Thirteen businesses in total, and part of the financing is PACE financing, which is going towards improvements to the old building as well as improvements to the new construction that increase the energy efficiencies through increased efficiency in HVAC, insulation, windows, and lighting. The financing's coming from a group called Greenworks Lending, which is an arm of Nuveen Finance. It's a pretty big financial company out of Connecticut. They own TIA-CREF as well. So, it's all private financed, fully amortized over 25 years. It's going to be paid back directly to the lender. The role of the county is to approve it, and then the role, if there was a default, would be to place it on the tax, as a tax rules, as a delinquent tax.
Which we would do anyway.
Yeah, so the goal here is to get them their financing. They'll pay back directly to the lender over 25 years. We'll come back 25 years later. I'll be 65 years old, and we'll release the loan from the roles.
That's in Commissioner Avery's district, I believe, right on the corner.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a really great project. I mean, it's perfect. It's an old building that's getting redeveloped. It's a new building. Like I said, it's 13 new businesses. There's some great restaurants in there, some shops, clothing shops, and general kind of things. So, the goal here is to help them with the financing for the building that they've already done with the kind of shell, and then the tenant improvement process. And then, there's some really great statistics that I have on, you know, these improvements compared to just baseline energy code of how much energy they're going to save over 25 years. It saves the property owner about 150 grand just in utility bills a year utilizing these improvements.
Commissioner Shoemaker, I believe that we did a project in Fenton a couple of years ago.
As you started to bring it up, you know, the cobwebs started to fall off, and I started to remember slightly, so. But I thank you for the information. I think it's a great project. That property was a wonderful piece of property for so long that sat empty. I think we all marveled, how could it sit empty for so long? So, it's wonderful to see something going in there, and thank you for the update. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Looking forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Say up for any other questions if there is.
Is there any other questions?
I just want to thank you for revitalizing that eyesore for a couple of decades here, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, this property owners, we've worked with them a few times on other projects in Birmingham and in Rochester Hills, so we're glad that he's doing one in Genesee County as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks.
Motion passes. Yes, thank you. Resolution 24-1016, Approval of a Purchase Order to Oliver Packaging for the Fiscal Year Ending in 2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $75,000.
If you jump up two pages.
You kidding me?
Well, you're-
He's good at two now.
Maximum for me.
I apologize for screwing up, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, if you just wanted to move them all at once, you could have just let us know.
Do we want to do a consent agenda? Well, yeah, I see that. I was just looking. The other one was 14, so it's close, you know.
It's on the same numbers.
Resolution 24-882, Approval of a Self-Inured Autotrust Agreement and Memorandum of Understanding.
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-891, Forwarding to Receive and File a Copy of the Paid County Bills for the Week's Ending, 7/14/24, 7/21/24, 7/28/24, and 8/4/24, in the total amount of $14,941,215.57.
I'll move it.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-902, Approval of a Request to Create, Post, and Fill One GIS Specialist Position and Eliminate One GIS Technician Position at Genesee County's GIS.
Move it.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions? I'll just make the comment. That's in the budget, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-961, Approval of a Purchase Order to Headset Advisor for the Fiscal Year Ending in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $112,984 to Provide for the Purchase of Headsets. The Cost of this Purchase will be Paid Using ARPA Funding as Previously Allocated.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions, Mr. Shoemaker?
Where will the headsets be used, then?
Part of, this is a part of our migration to the cloud for our phones, and so we are removing the existing phones that people have and replacing with either virtual phones, which is the preference, that is, their computers, or desktop phones, or their cellphones. In any case, the folks who are using their desktops will need somebody to connect to the, to the system, to the voice system, and so that's what these headsets are for.
May I continue just one more question? How many headsets are we getting with this?
Thousand.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of Proposed Amendment to the 23-24 Appropriations Resolution, Reallocating Expenditures Within the Community Corrections Budget as Described in the Attached Memo.
To move.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 24-979, Forwarding to Receive and File a Copy of the 2022 Foreclosure Sales Report as Required by MCL 211.78M8.
Move it.
LRI or something. Support?
Support.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-996, Approval of a Purchase Order to Multiple Vendors for the Fiscal Year Ending in 2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $157,000 to Provide for the Purchase of Medical Supplies at Genesee County's Health Department. The Cost of this Purchase Order is Paid from Accounts.
Move it. Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-997, Approval of a Purchase Order to Multiple Vendors for the Fiscal Year Ending in 2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $245,000 to Provide for Drug and Pharmaceutical Purchases at Genesee County's Health Department. The Cost of this Purchase Order will be Paid from the Accounts Listed.
So moved.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 24-1012, Approval of a Proposed Budget Amendment to the 23-24 Appropriations Resolution for Various Line Items as Described in the Attached Budget Adjustment Request.
So moved.
Support.
All those in, any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1015, Approval of a Purchase Order to Gordon's Food Service for the Fiscal Year Ending 2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $1,255,224.20 to Provide for the Purchase of Food and Cleaning Supplies for Genesee County's Nutrition Service Program and Head Start Program. The Cost of this Purchase Order is Paid from the Following Accounts.
I'll move it.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions, Mr. Shoemaker?
I'm sure I probably know the answer. This was sent out to bid.
Okay, could we have purchasing?
Cam Coleman.
Okay.
Yeah.
Always guess the wrong one.
Good evening, Commissioners. Through the chair to Commissioner Shoemaker, this was not sent out to bid. We have an agreement through HPS Hospital, oh, HSP, whatever that hospital service plan is, where they do the negotiating for the best prices for us, for our kitchen purchases through the nutrition services program. So, my apologies, I am on the wrong one. This is Gordon's. No, sir. This was not, this did not go out for bid. We do our bulk ordering through Gordon's, and they are the supplier. Gordon's and U.S. Foods is in here. They are the vendors that are able to supply us the bulk that we need in the quickest turnaround.
Yes, to you, Mr. Chair, to Commissioner Shoemaker, they, we also have a cooperative agreement with them as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is there any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1016, Approval of Purchase Order to Oliver Packaging for the Fiscal Year Ending in 2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $75,000 to Provide for the Purchase of Food Packaging Supplies for Genesee County's Nutrition Services Program and Head Start Program. The Cost of this is in the following accounts.
So move.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1018, Approval of Purchase Order to Abbott Laboratories for the Fiscal Year Ending in 2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $147,000 to the, to provide the, for the Purchase of Insure Shakes for Genesee County's Nutrition Services Program. The Cost of this Purchase Order will be Paid from the Following Accounts. Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1019, Approval of Purchase Order to U.S. Foods for the Fiscal Year Ending in 20, 2025, I'm sorry, in the Amount Not to Exceed $199,083.87 to Provide for the Purchase of Food and Supplies for Genesee County's Nutrition Services Program and Head Start Program. Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1020, Approval of a Purchase Order to Flint Jewish Federation for the Fiscal Year Ending in 2025 in the Amount Not to Exceed $50,000 to Provide Kosher Meals for Genesee County's Nutrition Services Program.
So moved.
The Cost of this is from the Following Accounts. Is there any comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution, approval of, I'm sorry, Resolution 24-1021, Approval of a Purchase Order to Genesee Packaging Incorporated for the Fiscal Year Ending in 2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $144,000 to Provide for the Purchase of Packaging Supplies for Genesee County's Supplement Food Program. The Cost of this Purchase is from the Accounts.
Support.
Any comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1025, Approval of Proposed Budget Amendment to the 24-25 Appropriations Resolution for Various Line Items as Described in the Past.
So move.
Budget Adjustment. Is there any comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24-1027, Approval of a Purchase Order to Aramac for the Fiscal Year Ending in 25, 2025 in the Amount Not to Exceed $880,000 to Provide for the Annual Food and Commissionary Services to the Inmates Housed at the Genesee County Jail. The Cost of this is from the Following Account.
I'll move it.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 24-1028, Approval of a Purchase Order to Stellite Tracking of, Satellite Tracking of People LLC for the Fiscal Year Ending in 2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $275,000 to Provide for Tether Monitoring and Equipment. The Cost of this Purchase Order is Paid from the Following Account.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Commissioner Ellenberg?
Mr. Chair, is this something that went out for bid, or is this something that we already have, and why? If it didn't go out for bid, why?
Got somebody coming up now.
Evening, Captain Murphy of the Sheriff's Office. I believe it's been bid prior, and we're still under contract for that.
Okay, when will the contract be?
I don't have that. I don't know.
And is it in Genesee County? Do we have one of these companies in Genesee County, or are we going outside the county for this service?
I don't know that. I will find out for you.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Jane.
No, I said, dear.
Oh, Dr. Brown, would you like to go?
I'm good.
Oh, you got nothing? All right, well, I've got a few. And I, forgive me, if I may, through the chair. The tether program, for me, has seemed to increase the last, since I've been down here, and obviously during COVID, there is a reason our jails overcrowded and-
Absolutely.
From there. Have, have you seen any progress in the amount of inmates we're turning through the court system so we can reduce that population over there, and maybe put some of these people back into the jail and remove some of this burden from the taxpayers' role?
Remove people from tether and put them back into the jail?
Well, if, let's put it this way. My understanding was this, that we were overflowing, so there were people who had to be put on tether, and I think I'm 100% correct during that, during COVID, because we weren't processing killer cases and everything else like that. My, my goal would be, obviously, one, people deserve a fair and speedy trial at some point, you know, because this is still the United States of America. Two- you know, because this is still the United States of America. Two, there's a cost to this, obviously, detaining them over there. And there's a cost to the tether program. The tether program just to me brings up a point, the fact that, guess what, if they're sitting in there, that's a cost burden on the taxpayers of Genesee County. And I'm just wondering, have we, if you see anything that would indicate you see it speeding up through the courts, that we're actually processing people at a rate more efficiently? Because this number seems to be the same, if I remember correctly, as we've approved before.
I think it is. I don't, I don't think it's speeding up the court process, I wouldn't say that. Having the tether does reduce the burden on the jail. Jail numbers are a little bit lower, so it does lessen that. With short staffing, that does help us. But unfortunately, I don't think it's speeding up the court process at all.
Okay, because that's, I mean, I mean, it's, that's, that's a pretty good chunk for tether. Do you know how many tethers that actually supplies?
I do not.
Could you get that for me?
I will.
If you can for next week?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. All right, thank you.
I have one more question.
Ellenberg, please.
You may not know this, but maybe we could find out. While, you know, inmates are on tether, do we pay child, or do we pay healthcare on them, being the fact they're incarcerated, but they're incarcerated a different way?
I don't think we do, if they're on tether.
If you could find that out?
I'll confirm that.
Because that would be cost savings in itself, if we didn't have to supply healthcare. All right, thank you.
It's my understanding that converting to more people being on tether, it's lowered the number of people in the jails, especially those that have been in there long-term just waiting for a trial. And we've all heard of people being in there for years and then going, finally going to trial and being found innocent. And so, that's part of some of the reasoning behind this, but it's, I do know that it is trying to keep the numbers down out of the jail. And I would think that looking at these numbers and how much it costs for us to incarcerate people, it's probably far cheaper to have them out there as long as they're not committing other crimes.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
That leads into a bigger debate, which we're dying, we're talking about tethers.
Right, I was just making a comment. I can understand different opinions on it, yeah.
No, I appreciate that. Like I said, my, my concern is one taxpayer dollars throughout the county from there. I also have concerns for the victims if, if the person is guilty, okay, and they are put back out, you know, because we are overcrowding and stuff like that, and something was to happen, or they are committing more crimes, you know, because we're not moving people through the system, which there's so many flaws with not moving people through the system that, I'm just trying to see where we are with that. Like I said, I, it's a conversation I'd like to have with Josh, maybe we could get some numbers to see how backlogged we are and where we are with the process. I know we'd allocated funds at one time to actually speed things up. I think that was about two years ago we did that, maybe a little less.
Maybe, maybe three, you know.
And just to see, just to see where we are in the process and if it's helped, you know, what we did. So, but this just, like I said, brought, brought this issue up to the forefront for me. Not that I'm against the tether program or anything like that, like I said, just got me thinking. And I appreciate your answer to my questions and if I could just get an answer on the amount of tethers. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak.
Yes, you're welcome. Is there any, Commissioner?
I'd like to ask Captain Murphy, can you talk a little bit about the monitoring process of the tethers?
Yeah, so the majority of it, they get sentenced to that by the judge. The judge will allow that. They have to come in, we do a background to make sure they have a residence to say at, it's a proper residence, they're not going to be around their victims if they have a victim. They have to come in and check in periodically. We do home visits to make sure they're there doing what they're supposed to.
So the monitoring is regular?
It's what, I'm sorry?
It's regular monitoring of?
Regular?
So?
I'm sorry, I guess I didn't understand.
I think, I think she means, you're looking for continuous?
Yes.
Yeah, it's continuous.
Okay.
Yep, so say they do leave their residence, you know, they're supposed to be at their house and they leave, we get a notice.
So you track them?
We track them, we'll go pick them up if they cut it off, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Approval, resolution twenty-four dash ten twenty-nine, approval of a purchase order to advance correctional health care for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-five in an amount not to exceed four million, one hundred thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars to provide healthcare services to the inmates housed in Genesee County Jail. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the accounts listed.
So moved.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Yeah, Commissioner?
I just wonder how much of this four million dollars is allocated toward mental health?
I, I don't have the, the number on that for the monetary amount, but I know they do provide mental health twenty-four seven.
I'd just be curious for, Mr. Chair, I'd just be curious for future reference, trend information for mental health care expenses in our, for our incarcerated population, if you could?
Absolutely, I'll get that for you.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion? You might talk to, what's Marlene's last name? Colick. She would have that information also.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Ellenberg?
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I could piggyback on Dr. Brown's, on that, if we could, if we are using some of this healthcare for mental health, if we can maybe possibly tie in with Genesee Health System and possibly?
Yeah, and that would definitely be something to look into for sure. If I could benefit, that would be amazing.
So that we can partner with them. Okay, thank you.
And we do now, they do come in and do mental health assessments and help us out currently.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to confirm that. I know that GHS does come in and do some of that.
Just a question, and maybe to Josh, is any of this covered by a Genesee Health Plan?
Yes, so as part of the budget, we do allocate some of that millage to offset this cost, because normally this cost would be a hundred percent general fund. But with the excess in the Genesee Health Plan millage, we are using some of that to cover the uninsured that are in the jail. I don't know, Crystal, what is that number this year that was adopted? Can you come up to the? Ish, not a, not an exact number, just a round number.
I think it was about one point seven.
I'm sorry?
One point seven million.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution twenty-four dash ten thirty, approval of a purchase order to Bunzi Distribution Incorporated for the fiscal year ending in twenty twenty-five in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars to provide for the purchase of janitorial and related supplies to be used within the Genesee County Jail. The cost of this purchase order is paid from the following account.
Support.
Is there any questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution twenty-four dash ten thirty-one, approval of a purchase order to Bound Tree Medical for the fiscal year ending in twenty twenty-five in an amount not, amount of one hundred thousand dollars to provide for the purchase of medical supplies. The cost of this purchase order is from the following accounts.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Resolution twenty-four dash ten fifty-six, approval of the federal awards administration policy.
So moved.
Support.
Is there any comments or questions, Mr. Shoemaker?
Can we give a, add a little more explanation on this, please?
Crystal can speak to it.
Sure. So, since I've started here, almost six years ago, I've been working on policies, formal policies for our department. We do have written policies that we follow for federal grants, but we've never formalized those to be approved by the BOC. The granting agencies now don't want just our internal policies, they're asking for policies that have been approved by the boards, that you're all aware of how we administer these grants. So this is putting them all together, all the compliance categories that affect all of our federal grants across the county and how the county will be putting in procedures and controls to make sure that we're spending those funds appropriately.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is there any other comments or questions, Crystal? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Is there any other business?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
With all the nutrition resolutions on here, I realize that I had not publicly thanked Director Coleman for helping a constituent in Swartz Creek, whose name is Roberta. She called me, emailed me, called me, and was quite upset that she wasn't able to get her food box. And I think had been told that she wasn't eligible, but Pam to the rescue and talked to Roberta, and now she's on the monthly distribution of the USDA food, food box and wrote me back a glowing review of her interaction with Director Pam Coleman. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wayhill. We are adjourned at six ten.
All right, Government Operations is called to order at six oh nine PM. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd? Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Present.
Commissioner Kuzina?
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
All right, before we have the approval of the minutes, I'd like to take a moment of silence. Today is September eleventh, and if we could all take a moment of silence. Thank you. We have approval of the minutes from the meeting on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Move it. Support.
Then moved and supported, is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Do we have public comment to this committee? Any public comment to Government Operations? Last call, public comment. Public comment is closed. Do we have any communications?
No, sir.
It appears we have no old business, new business. Resolution dash two zero two four dash six three two, approval of a contract between Genesee County and Bendel Public Schools in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars to provide for one school resource officer. The term of the contract is September first, twenty twenty-four, through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Excuse me, resolution two zero two four dash seven seven seven, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Fiddler Technologies in an amount not to exceed six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars to provide for records management software in the office of the clerk register. The term of this agreement is October one, twenty twenty-four, through September thirty, twenty twenty-seven. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the accounts listed.
Move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellenberg?
Yes, since we do have the clerk register here, if you could explain this, that would probably show up some clarification.
Lots of good information for you today. This is a big and exciting project that we're excited to do in the office of the clerk register. To quote Marshall Mathers, if you have one shot, one opportunity to get everything that you've wanted, would you go for it or just let it waste away? And that's what we have here before you all today. This contract with Fiddler would change our record management system to one that is not only more cost effective for the county in a savings of roughly sixty thousand dollars annually, but a project and a program that will create a streamlined use of services for the residents of this county with new online technologies and capabilities. It will make the life easier for our staff with better connections to other departments and easier use of access, as well as setting ourselves up to be a leader across the state in some of the new services that we can provide. To look a little bit more specifically at this, one of the biggest things for this in going through an RFP, our current contract with Tyler Technologies is ending, and we've gone through the RFP process. Tyler Technologies, in summary, is a large technology company that happens to do some work in this world of clerk and register of deeds. Fiddler, however, is a company that primarily does clerk and register of deeds that happens to have some cool technology with them. They are specialized in the work of clerks and registers. They know in and out the policies and procedures and have built a tool that works specifically for our offices. This service is going to create color-coded cues for our staff to help with their physical strain of eyes, the well-being of office staff. I'm really excited about the BSNA integration with our equalization department and our finance department for streamlining some of our reports, as well as state integration that will help us not have to manually upload vital records. So the current process with vital records, of course, when somebody is born or when somebody dies, it all goes through a state system. We then download all of those records and upload them manually into our Tyler Technology system. This new technology will have the capability to directly connect with the state system, saving staff hours for my staff to be able to better service our residents and work more directly with them. When it comes to our residents, there's a lot of really cool features for this project, primarily the addition of more services online. We will be able to process marriage applications completely online. A resident can go online, fill out their marriage application, submit the documentation that they need, and get approval and only need to come in to pick up that license. We'll be able to process electronic concealed pistol license, something that we've only been able to do in person via paper. We'll also be able to electronically certify death certificates, which means the funeral homes that we work with on a daily basis, instead of every day having to come to our office two or three times to pick up certified copies of death certificates, we can email them out to expedite the process of those in our community that are facing loss. This will expand the fraud prevention programs that we're trying to build now in the deeds office that has a dedicated staff from Fiddler Technologies that will be able to provide alerts to folks when action is taken on their property records and have the opportunity to not get an automated alert, but get to talk to a real live human being based here in the United States. And a really cool thing that I think you all like is, you may have seen the introduction of new state law called Daniel's Law around protecting address confidentiality for judges primarily. There are conversations about potentially expanding that for all elected officials. And Fiddler Technologies is currently one of the only vendors that already has that built in, where we can shield addresses of elected officials from property records to keep you all safe, especially during election years. And then finally, in the ease of access and accessibility, they offer their online platform in a user-friendly way that folks can select the language that best works for them to be able to understand the processes and the services that they're using. And when it comes to those in our community, we can partner with our Veterans Resource Department and community organizations to offer something called Honor Rewards, a system where we can work with local companies to provide additional discounts and services for our veterans and providing cards for them to use that. Just a few of the features that this Fiddler contract would grant us at the county and would be happy to take any specific questions that you have.
So I saw Commissioner Kuzina's hand earlier?
Yeah, you answered most of my questions, but I know that we went through quite a process when we purchased Tyler's, you know, software. So basically, you know, after these number of years, you know, everybody updates. Did Tyler update to the, to the same level as what this is? Or do they not offer as many things for more?
So the short answer is no. Tyler does not have the same capabilities that Fiddler has in some of these very direct things that I mentioned, those services. Tyler's made a lot of upgrades as far as some of their technology, but none of it's specific to the clerk and register of deeds office. And really, what one of the biggest differences and selling points is every update, every system update, be it a security update, be it a new feature, Tyler Technologies, you're going to pay a fee for that every single time, ten to twenty thousand dollars. So you're in a two hundred thousand dollar contract and every year they offer you the upgrade, it's an additional twenty thousand. Part of Fiddler is their life, their life plan is that they get your updates. If it's a security update or if it's a new feature, that's part of this contract price that we're paying, and still at a reduced rate. And the other thing that I will say, within the two years of being in the clerk register's office, the biggest issue we've had with Tyler Technologies, and don't get me wrong, they are a great tech company that has a great tool, has some of the most wor- some of the most, has some of the worst customer service experience that I've ever dealt with as a consumer. We have put help tickets in when parts of their process have gone down. October first, we put a help desk ticket in. We got that resolved April seventeenth. We are now three weeks into an issue with Tyler Technologies where our search utilization for some of our extraction in the deeds department- for some of our extraction in the deeds department to do online searches has been down for three weeks, crippling our title companies who now have to physically come in in person and something they've gotten used to doing online. And we're told, we don't know when we'll fix it.
Thank you.
Is there additional discussion? Commissioner Brett.
I just have a comment. Thank you for moving us into the 21st century with this technology. And can you just talk a little bit about the transition and how you envision that taking place?
So, that's a really great question, and we know transitioning to any new platform in any department is time-consuming, and that's why we're bringing this to you now. So, our hope is to start our contract execution in October, which gives, sorry, Fiddler, gives them the opportunity to start working with our clerk register team and our IT team to start the data migration process, getting to know our systems and getting to learn what needs to be done. So, at the end of this year, all of the data that is online, we have all of our records in the deeds department from 1983 to present, will be able to be mitigated over. All of our vital records that we have for the perpetuity of history that we have, over 100 years of records, will be able to be added online. Then in January, once all of that data is migrated, we will continue to use the Tyler system, but they will be providing as part of this contract onsite training for all staff in the clerk and register of deeds office over the course of several months, where they'll get trained on how to use the system, best practices, how to do the integrations with BSNA, how to do the integrations with the state. Once we've had a few months of training, we will then start using that Fiddler Technologies publicly with the residents, with the consumers, getting that updated on our website while we're still under the current contract with Tyler, which expires July 1st, so we can see what's missing, what quirks, what data pieces we need to update to, so that by July 1st, we are completely moved off of the Tyler platform and completely onboarded with Fiddler.
Thank you.
Is there additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is passed. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Resolution dash 2024 dash 936, approval of a purchase order to Stryker Medical for the fiscal year ending 2025 in the amount not to exceed a collective total of $129,711.24.
I move it.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution dash 2024 dash 942, approval of a grant award from the Office of Highway Safety Planning in the amount of $869,430 to provide for Genesee County Secondary Road Patrol Program. The budget for this grant is attached.
Support.
It's been moved. Is there support? Oh, it's moved and supported. All right, is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution dash 2024 dash 951, approval of a purchase order to Covetris North America for the fiscal year ending 2025 in an amount not to exceed $95,000 to provide for medical supplies at Genesee County's Animal Control. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from account listed. It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution dash 2024 dash 952, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $276,368 to provide for the prosecution of and law enforcement projects targeting violence against women. There is a 25% match requirement. The budget for this grant is attached.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution dash 2024 dash 953, approval of a purchase order to ZETIS for the fiscal year ending 2025 in an amount not to exceed $45,000 to provide required vaccine supplies. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from account listed.
Move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024 dash 954, approval of a purchase order to IDEXX for the fiscal year ending 2025 in an amount not to exceed $45,000 to provide testing supplies and laboratory services at Genesee County's Animal Control. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the account listed. All right, moved and supported. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution dash 2024 dash 957, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $408,296 to provide for the 2025 crime victim services at Genesee County's Prosecutor's Office. The budget for this grant is attached. Moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution dash 2024 dash 971, approval of a request by Genesee County's Prosecutor to self-fund liability and workers' compensation insurance for the special assistant prosecuting attorney generals.
I move it.
Moved and supported. Is there discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Can we have a little explanation of this, please?
John, please. Identify yourself and then.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Potbury with the Prosecutor's Office. What was the question?
I just wanted a little more explanation of what this, what this is going to do for us or how is this going to benefit the county or what's happening with this.
Well, we receive three prosecutors for our office from the Attorney General's budget, and there's no strings attached to that, but they do not fund for liability or workers' comp. So, for I don't know how many years, we've done this now, five or six years, we, the county board has approved to self-fund those two measures, workers' comp and liability insurance, and there have been no claims on that. We haven't had anybody get any serious paper cuts working in the office, so they haven't been asked to climb the top of high buildings. Liability claims, there have been none, so we feel it's an outstanding benefit to the county from a personnel perspective and a budget perspective, if that makes sense.
One quick.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Maybe not to you, but to everyone. Normally, when we receive grants or funding, we generally cover the majority of the employee. Am I, am I wrong? So, does anyone know why this one's different or?
I don't. I just know this is the way it's been.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know the reasoning.
Just, John, thank you. I appreciate it. I just, normally, you know, when I'm bugging poor Crystal about what's covered, what's not covered, and all the other stuff, she's like, oh, they're covered, you know, even if, even if it's some pension costs, they're covering those things. So, this is so odd that we're at, you know, we've done it, but that they don't.
It's because it comes from the Attorney General's office. They're the ones that are paying their salaries. They're actually employees of the Attorney General's office, but we select them, interview them, hire them, they work under our supervision. It's just kind of a gap. It's unusual, unique.
The pros outweigh the cons.
Any comments?
No, the pros outweigh the cons. I, like I said, it's just kind of different. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there additional discussion or questions for Mr. Potbury? Commissioner Kuzina.
It's my understanding self-funded, so we're not paying for any insurance policy. It's just.
Correct. Yes, if there were any claims, any payments to be made.
So, there's no added cost for anything unless there's a claim.
Yes.
All right, additional discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Resolution dash 2024 dash 999, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Kevin Rush in an amount not to exceed $56,000 to provide for the coordination and delivery of weekday arraignments, misdemeanors, and other legal services. The term of this agreement is October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the following account.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution dash 2024 dash 1000, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Philip H. Bovee III Professional Corporation in an amount not to exceed $156,000 to provide for the coordination and delivery of weekday arraignments, misdemeanors, and other legal services. The term of this agreement is October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
So, move.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? Commissioner Brown, then Commissioner Shoemaker.
I, thank you, Mr. Chair. Why is there such a big difference between the two, between Resolution 999 and 1,000?
Good afternoon, good after, yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
Nathaniel Perry, public defender. The, I think there may have been a misprint because the first one in Resolution 09999, that's the weekend arraignment person. So, that's, Mr. Rush is the one that takes care of delivery of legal services involving felonies and misdemeanors for our weekend arraignments. And Mr. Bovee in, in Resolution 1,000, he handles our weekday arraignment process, handling all the delivery of services for felonies and misdemeanors.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Right. Commissioner Shoemaker.
That, that answer my.
That answers your question. Thank you, Judge. Oh, Commissioner Kuzina.
So, do we need to change the one that, the resolution we passed?
Resolutions are correct. It's the, just the.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Do we have any other business for this committee? I do want to thank Derek Britton and the staff in Veterans Services for putting together the annual rally for veterans, a resource rally. We managed to steal it away from the 9th District this year, so it's going to be in the 8th in the city of Flushing at Riverview Park this Saturday, and the timing is 11 to 4, and I understand that people are still eligible to sign up and come. It is free to active-duty military, veterans, and their families. So, those of you in the audience who qualify and are interested, please come, and those of you watching at home, please join us. And if you have questions, you can call Director Britton's office in Veterans Services. Any other business? Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since we're talking about veterans, I want to talk about a veteran that was featured on TV 12 News today, and this is a resident. I believe he was a constituent, is a constituent of yours or mine. He's in Flint Township. And I just want to commend Lieutenant Andrew Snyder of the Genesee County Sheriff's Department for helping this gentleman who is a double amputee and having collaborated with resources in the county and some of his friends, and they built a ramp for this gentleman to be able to enter and exit his home a lot more easier. So, I want to commend Lieutenant Andrew Snyder for his, his, being, for being noble. Thank you.
Any other business? All right, Government Operations is adjourned at 6:31.
We're going to call the Human Services Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd. Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
President.
Commissioner Kuzina.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
At this time, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
移到 Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Are there any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Public comments are closed. Any communications?
No, sir.
No old business, new business, Resolution 24925, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, local water utility affordability grant in the amount of $1,175,000 to provide water payment assistance to eligible Genesee County residents.
移到
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution 24927, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and UTJ Code Company in an amount not to exceed $82,060 to provide curriculum kits for Genesee County's Head Start Program. Cost of this agreement will be paid from the accounts listed.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution 24980, approval of an agreement between Genesee County's Community Action Resource Department and Genesee County's Metropolitan Planning Commission in the amount of $23,401 to provide housing assistance for eligible Genesee County residents.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution 24981, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $1,001 and, wait a minute, $1,001,077 to provide funding for Genesee County's Nutrition Services Program.
Move it.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Chair, since Resolution 981 and 982 are so close, I'd like to move both of them together, please.
Without objection, we can do that. Any discussion on either? Hear none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution 24983, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Jillian Coda Bato in an amount not to exceed $115,000 to provide nurse practitioner services at Genesee County's Health Department.
移到
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution 241003, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Mass Transportation Authority in the amount not to exceed $160,000 to provide for Genesee County's Vets to Wellness Program.
移到 Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Commissioner Kuzina.
Just a question. What did we spend on this last year? Is this the same amount?
Colonel Britton.
Good evening, Director Derek Britton, Genesee County Veterans Services. We budgeted last year $170,000 for this. A little bit less.
You used all 170 last year?
No, we did not.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution 241048, approval of Genesee County's annual payments to area hospitals for uncompensated care, total payments not to exceed $1,500,000. Cost of these payments will come from Genesee County's uninsured health services mileage.
移
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. If no other business before this committee, it stands adjourned.
I'd like to call this meeting to order for Public Works at 6:38. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lloyd. Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Ellenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Avery. Commissioner Shoemaker. Commissioner Kuzno stepped out for a second. Commissioner Wayhill.
I'm here.
Commissioner Davis.
Could I have approval of the minutes of August 14?
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. At this time, it's for public comment. Do we have any public comment? Any public comment? Third time, any public comment? Seeing none. Any communications?
No, ma'am.
Old business. New business, Resolution 2024-628, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and 13 verticals in the amount not to exceed $35,280 to provide consulting services related to OnBase. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the following.
So move.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Mr. Shoemaker.
Chair, can we have a little more explanation on this, please?
CIO can come up.
General explanation?
Please.
OnBase, as you know, is a platform we've used for many offices and departments, and has been used for many years and has had various administrators. The heavy lifting in that software is the work flows that are utilized there to move documents between various people and approvers. Because there have been so many administrators and not necessarily best practices in play over a very long time, we have a mess. Try to use more sophisticated language than that, but that's about it. It's very hard to administer, and we've observed that we're wasting an incredible amount of time and making way too many mistakes because of the spaghetti mess that's involved under there, and some of... Even some of our really good people know what they're doing. Even the consultants will look at our stuff and say, "Wow, this is a real mess." So, this is an effort to clean up that mess. We're already consulted to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? See and none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Move... Or Resolution 2024-896, approval of a request to increase a purchase order to various vendors for the fiscal year ending 2024 in the amount not to exceed $15,000 to provide for purchases of tires at Genesee County Motor Pool.
So move it. Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Shoemaker.
Madam Chair, thank you. I just see the word "increase" in there, and it makes me wonder why. We have more fleet out there now. We're going through more vehicles we didn't budget for. What is...
Ray can come up and talk about that.
Short answer is yes. We've increased some additional vehicles, and then some of the costs have gone up specifically for like...
I may...
Go ahead.
This is figured in the budget still?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? See and none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Or move 2024-928, approval of three amendments to Centennial Incorporated Contract to Purchase Shields for Security Cameras at the jail, the fisheye cameras for the exterior and multiple-view monitoring stations at Genesee County Jail and Circuit Court and Durstard Court. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? See and none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-931, approval agreement between Genesee County and Image Sloth Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $169,801.63 to provide for OnBase software maintenance. The term of this agreement is from October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? See and none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-976, approval of a request by Genesee County Drain Commissioner to sell parcels at 7143 Ralston Road.
So move.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Can we just find out a little bit more about why this sale is taking place? And he's here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John O'Brien. I'm Director of Water and Waste Services. Genesee County Drain Commissioner's Office, we own close to 9,000 acres of land throughout the county for our treatment process, our water treatment. And over the years, we have used property for certain treatment techniques. Then we've stopped using them. So, I've got approximately 40 acres on Ralston Road that we use for land application. So, we own the land, but that's... We put our biosols on that property. And we've got a small chunk of it that's landlocked because of a ditch. So, the owners of the property that are adjacent to us asked if they could buy a strip of land. So, it does not impact our operation because it is a landlocked piece. Normally, when we do something like this, we will also go out for an appraisal to verify we get a good price. But an appraisal is $5,000, and we're only selling about an acre of land, so we didn't think at this time it was necessary to get an appraisal.
Any other discussion? See and none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Resolution 2024-985, approval of a purchase order to various vendors for the fiscal year ending 2025 in the amount not to exceed $70,000 to provide for the purchase of tires at Genesee County Motor Pool. Cost is the following.
I move it.
Support.
I feel like I just read that one. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? See and none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-11001, approval of a purchase order to Wolverine Power System for the fiscal years ending 2024 and 2025 in the amount not to exceed $108,675 to provide for the purchase of three generators. The cost of this agreement from the following.
So move it.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Shoemaker.
Where will these generators be used at?
Parks Director, can you answer that?
Thank you, Commissioners. Through the chair, too. Commissioner Shoemaker. So, it's actually three different sites, five different generators. So, we will... And these are all standby generators, so when the power goes off, they will kick on. The first one will be at our Parks Office where our park rangers operate out 24/7 and our office staff. The second one will be our maintenance warehouse where we have the gas pumps. A lot of times, if we lose power, we lose the ability to get fuel. And then the other three are going to be at Wolverine Campground. So, we're going to have two restroom buildings that will have power when we lose power, but those three buildings also have the panels in that that run the lift stations out there. So, it'll keep the lift stations running.
Mr. Shoemaker.
Does it include installation, then?
No, it does not. We will have an electrician that will have to do it. So... Sorry, let me rephrase that. This includes the installation, hooking up the fuel source and all that. Then an electrician will have to make the connections inside the building to the panel, but they will run everything up to that.
Any other questions? I have one. How many are there?
Five.
Five? And will that be a bid process or like union labor?
Yeah, so it was an out-through source well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? See and none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Resolution 2024-1004, approval of a purchase order from Bunsey Distribution for the fiscal year ending 2025 in the amount not to exceed $49,000 to provide janitorial supplies at various Genesee County buildings.
I move it.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? I have a question. Is there any reason... We've been purchasing a lot of janitorial supplies. Would it be better if we bought them like in a lump sum and then they picked them up? Like, you know, have a central location? Or has everybody got different supplies?
Derek from Purchasing and Ray from Facilities can probably speak to that.
Timing, but I believe that purchasing has bid all this out through an RFP, but we just want to be able to get our purchase order timely, and I think the jail had one on the previous...
Yes. Do you miss... Miss Chair, Madam Chair? Yeah, the... We did a bid process for these, and what basically happens is that we provide them with the list of the items that the various departments use, and then a company will provide the price. Now, what happens is that, like in Ray's situation, if he needs to order toilet paper, he put in his order, and then they'll deliver it directly here for the distribution for the areas that are in need of that specific item.
So, will it be better when we get to the new building where it could all be combined since it's on one location, that everything will be delivered?
I believe it'll still be the same. It's just that, you know, those are just regular janitorial supplies that we utilize on a day-to-day basis. It's just that we won't have this building, but the other buildings will be serviced with these particular supplies as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? See and none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any other business?
No, ma'am.
See and none. This meeting is adjourned at 6:50.